Okay, my drop, drop the mic.
We're to call to order the meeting of, regular meeting of the Bexley Board of Education for Monday, October 21st, 2019, and I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance, "To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undoubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Mr. Smith, can you call a roll, please?
Mr. Vardo.
Here.
Ms. Snowden.
Here.
Ms. Minio.
Here.
Ms. LaFaw.
Here.
And Mr. Dennison unfortunately is ill and will not be able to attend tonight's meeting, so wanted to make sure everyone knew that, that that is why he's not here. Also, if there's anyone here for public comment on the stand here, on the podium here, there's a sign-in sheet if you plan on giving public comment for your name and your address. Anytime you want to get up and do that, I'd appreciate that.
Thank you.
First item on our agenda is, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the September 9th, 2019 meeting?
Summoned.
Are there any changes, questions, revisions to that?
No.
Hearing none, all those in favor of the approval of the minutes from the September 9th, 2019 meeting, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Thank you. We have a special recognition this evening, so I will turn it over to Dr. Miller.
Thank you, we do have a special recognition. I would like to invite Ms. Cara Whitlatch to the podium, as well as Mr. Eli Goldberg, our athletic director. Ms. Whitlatch has been recognized as the Ohio High School Athletic Association Field Hockey Coach of the Year for the state of Ohio, so congratulations, and I'm going to let Mr. Goldberg talk a little bit about why she was recognized.
Okay, so thank you, and I'm happy to, in particular, to share with you that our field hockey coach, Cara Whitlatch, was named the OHSA Coach of the Year. This prestigious award is honored to a coach for their body of work, not necessarily just the current season. Five coaches were nominated this year throughout the state, and all coaches in the state had the opportunity to vote. One of the coaches who nominated Cara submitted the following, which I think sums up Coach Whitlatch. Cara has always been available to answer any sort of question that a new head coach might have at a moment's notice. It's fun to compete against Cara's teams, because her teams understand the idea of being competitive and being sportsmanlike. Cara has been a part of Central Ohio Field Hockey for many years, and in that time, she has volunteered her time as a Central Ohio Field Hockey League Secretary, along with doing many other things for the league. Cara has been the president of the Ohio Field Hockey Coaches Association for many years. In this role, she attends meetings at the OHSA and keeps all coaches informed about her sport. This year, she stepped up to organize the Senior All-Star Game, which will be held here at Bexley on November 3rd, and she is always willing to do whatever is needed for Central Ohio Field Hockey, as well as for the state. Her team is always very nice and respectful, whether they win or lose, and I think respect, the respect the team shows other teams and the officials is a direct reflection of the coach. So it is my honor to introduce to you the 2019 OHSA Field Hockey Coach of the Year, Cara Whitlatch.
Oh my, I'm supposed to have a speech?
No. If you want to say something, I can't.
And I guess not both your pick and all. Thank you very much. I'm lucky to coach in an atmosphere like Bexley, very supportive, very, thank you.
And it's your second one.
This is the second time she's gotten this award, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. We are now on to executive reports, and Dr. Miller.
Okay, so we actually, tonight, have a progress report toward our annual goals. That's part of our strategic plan by the executive leadership team, so I'm going to join them at the podium for this particular report. So in the, you'll recall, in the spring of 2018, we went through an extensive planning process to engage our community in a strategic planning process, and as a result of that, we wrote a plan that had three-year objectives, knowing that we could expand that into a six-year plan. And for each year of our plan, we establish annual goals, and we have 10 annual goals this year that will help us move toward those three-year objectives that we originally wrote. And so each quarter, we give you an update, and this is our quarter-one update for our year-two strategic plan. So a couple of reminders, again, we are in year-two of our implementation plan of the three-year plan. This year, we've restructured our administrative team to be more flexible, efficient, and responsive, and to respond in a more timely manner to the needs of our students and staff and community. Also, we're making steady progress toward the achievement of our goals while focusing on an upcoming levy, changing student needs, and orienting new staff to our Bexley culture. And each year, we have a theme in the district. This year, our theme is "Leading from Every Seat." As you get into year-two of your goals, it's getting a little more intense, and it's really important that each person is leading in their seat, and that's what we're doing this year. Again, we have a vision, a mission, and core values that guide our daily work each and every day. We have organized our plan around four large themes, and you'll hear those through the presentation tonight, and once again, we have 10 annual goals, and we'll be reporting progress on those annual goals this evening.
Good evening. So to start with our first theme, which is to build upon a student-centered learning culture, our goal that we've been working on at this time is implementing evidence-based instructional strategies consistently across buildings, departments, and grade levels that are grounded in district missions, core values, curriculum, and resources. And so as we started, that really means we've been focused on is making sure that our school goals are aligned to our district goals. All five schools have developed specific plans that they work with their staffs to develop and match the three district instructional goals. We've also spent a great deal of time since the start of school digging into all of the diagnostic data that we have used across the three elementaries to identify what instructional supports do our teachers need, our students need, at Tier 1 and Tier 2. And then our secondary teachers have been working very closely with our secondary instructional coach to design very specific building goals with her as well. Our second goal, then, is to continue to assess opportunity and achievement gaps and implement one new strategy to address opportunity and achievement gaps in each area. And I'll jump in with academics, if that's okay, she first. As I mentioned, we have spent a good deal of time looking at data that was connected to our earliest learners, our K-3 learners, and what we were identifying is what students were not on track, and what specific plans that we need to put in place in order to help them with their literacy skills. So we've done that, and it's been consistent work across all three, or all three elementaries, and we're excited to get that work started. From a secondary level, we looked in terms of our gifted students, and we looked for what gaps we might have in their learning, and one of the things that we noted at the middle school level was that we needed to be thinking about some opportunities for our gifted students, and so we ended up adding two additional gifted courses that will be offered to students in 6th and 8th grade during their flex period. So adding those additions and being very thoughtful in our planning for our kids as we move forward.
In my role, I've been asked to kind of keep an eye on, monitor the gaps that might be occurring in our athletic and our theater programs, two areas that I oversee, and I'm happy to report that we monitor the number of students that are assigned to academic, athletic study tables, as bluntly, and we've seen no discrepancy as far as major disproportionate number of assignments and things like that. In fact, probably to the other, our minority students are at a less percentage being assigned than our white students are in that area. And we also have been monitoring access to our athletic teams and seeing if there are gaps that way. And in aggregate, this year, I can tell you that we've had, we've had, we have less students in 7 through 12 than we've had in the past year, but we have more students involved in athletics. So we've seen an increase in number of students, with less number of students than are involved. So I think that's, that's a promising sign, but when you start peeling the onion and the layers back, we find really no major concerns either, as far as access and the relationship proportionately between our minority students and our white students. And we also look for special ed, we look at socioeconomic status, and we do see right now in this year's data about, we have 9% that makes socioeconomic status, we're down to about 4.5% are involved in our athletic program. We don't know the answer why, we don't, how the other subgroups, or excuse me, all the other student groups, we still, we see a pretty fair share. Theater, we're tracking theater also to determine that, and we've had a play this weekend, I'm sorry I don't have that data for you to share, the middle school play, but I do have the data from the theater, from the elementary play up on the screen, there, free to look at, and we did see, if this holds true longitudinally, what you'll see the next time I share this will be, for some reason, we get a very large percentage, or a good percentage, involved in the elementary level, and we'll see a decrease as time goes on and out. We don't, we can hypothesize as to the reason why, the more opportunities in the upper grades, but I think what's important is that we're tracking it, and I think the big takeaway, we're not seeing, there's always things we can find to try to ask the question, why? And try to make things better, because we want at least opportunities for all of our students, but we don't see any glaring issues right now that we need to address urgently.
Cara, next goal is to use data and processes to develop and implement programming for student, staff, and parents in the area of mental wellness, and it's been very exciting. I think we've gotten off to a really wonderful start with this school year. We just finished administering the Panorama Social Emotional Learning Survey to students in grades 4 through 12, and tomorrow, our principals and counselors will come together with the Panorama team to really look at what our students are telling through that survey. We also then hosted the Bexley Be Well initiative, and there were several components to that, and that will continue throughout the year, but as we started the year, we had the September 4th launch where we showed the film Ains to community, and then later shared that with students as well. We also have the October 6th Kate Fagan Community Conversation around the book What Made Maddie Run, and that book gained popularity certainly within our community, we purchased it for all staff, and many of our students have read it as well, and it brought light to anxiety and just stressors of growing up in the world today. And then we hosted the September 22nd Parent Institute, and we had seven specific sessions that were focused on mental health and wellness for our kids. And then finally, we've been working with Grantis Hope, which is an organization that helps us to complete an audit on the services that we do offer to our students in throughout our community, and so that will be a year-long work with them to identify any gaps that we might have in our mental self, mental health services for children. And then even as of today, we're involved in planning in regards to using mental health dollars that we'll be receiving from the state and identifying what would be most appropriate for Bexley students.
One of our goals this year focuses on our facilities and long-term facilities planning, and if you recall, we wrote this goal that primarily this would begin post-levy, post-November 5th. However, I did want you to know that with the Facilities Advisory Council, what they've done this year is taken tours of all of our complexes, thanks to Mr. Eichenberry, that group has been able to tour all three of our complexes, behind-the-scenes tours, so to speak, to really get a clear picture of what we have here. However, this, this particular goal will not get much attention until after November 5th.
Our second big theme area, then, is opening doors that lead to flexible and expansive future opportunities. And as we started this year, what it really means for us is to be digging into the curriculum review cycle, and last year, we had begun the cycle looking at visual arts, physical education, and music, and so our lead teachers who are involved with those areas have been working with me, and they'll hopefully finish that work here within the next few months, we bring that to you later in the school year for your approval. And then we're also looking forward to the English Language Arts Course of Study Review, and our K-5 teachers have begun to talk about what that might look like as we work through and look at everything from resources to how we structure our literacy learning for kids. We've spent a lot of time working on aligning instructional leadership, and this actually began in the summer and into the school year, and we've developed some very strong coaching structures for not only our administrators, but for our teachers. We engage our principals in what we call Principal Council Monthly, which means they work in specific level groups with myself. We also work with them as a K-12 group, we work with our entire leadership team, and we take them on vertical rounds, which means we divide them into two teams, we get into classrooms, and we practice looking for the very instructional practices that we're focused on as a district. We also have developed the instructional coaching framework with our three new coaches, and they have been off and running, and have had high impact on our teachers in a very short period of time. We have developed a year-long professional development plan, Sam McMasters has been instrumental in developing that plan, and looking at what kinds of training do our intervention specialists and other support staff need in order to best address the needs of our students. Dr. Miller and I worked extensively with Dr. Fred Burton, who just delivered our October 15th Professional Development Day. Dr. Burton worked with all K-12 staff, and his focus was really developing the learning culture with a focus on thinking. And then the last piece is, I've been working with the District Professional Development Committee, and we're looking ahead to the November 5th PD Day, and they have been instrumental and have been huge leaders in collecting sessions and planning for our areas of interest for our staff.
So we have a goal to execute year-one technology plan, actions focused on learning environment, operations, and infrastructure. So our strategic plan had previously the goal of creating a tech plan, so we have 10 set of goals specifically for technology that gets addressed here directly. I will tell you that all 10 of those goals are making progress, but some of those are starting a little slowly, because we have some actions that would be more appropriate post-levy, so we have an idea of what resources we have to work with. Four that I've just pulled out here, we've completed all the immediate action steps from our tech infrastructure audit from the spring. So we did an internal audit along with two external groups that came in, and all that work led to a 65-page document of very techie nerdy things, but all very valuable. And we went through, as the department worked through, all the things that we knew right away, we should, and they take care of. As part of our plan, we also have a goal to increase digital wellness lessons, and we are working with a consortium led by the OSU Classroom, along with several other school districts in Central Ohio, to create small lesson plans that could work K through 12 on areas like digital well-being, digital health, online etiquette, and citizenship. We're developing those throughout the next few months, and it will lead to Digital Wellness Month, which is February, where we'll have teachers utilizing those resources. We've developed a service catalog database. We still need to capture some of the information, but ultimately, we will have an online resource so that parents and teachers can go to find what tools we have specifically for students in common areas, grade levels, and all the things that we utilize, all the places that are our own. Lastly, we've created an ITSM workflow, that sounds very exciting. Ultimately, it is a plan for how do we do customer service. There are industry standards for how to handle this, and I've been trained in this, we're getting our staff trained in it, and that will ultimately lead to getting some help desk software to support that, to where we'll be able to provide service level agreement with our teachers. If you have this particular problem, we'll be able to get it done in so much time, and that's the commitment that we make. So we're making great progress there.
Our third theme, as you know, is around leverage, leveraging and growing our vital community relationships, and I am happy to say that this is a very strong area for us. Our goal here is to develop and utilize partnerships for experiential learning K-12 and to build upon our current relationships. Currently, our coordinator of experiential learning is working with a number of people to develop what we call a Bexley Connect database, which will be a database of community members both in Bexley and beyond the boundaries of Bexley into the greater Columbus area, who show an interest or have an interest in participating with us, either through internship opportunities or other types of opportunities to bring experiential learning to our students. Also, our coordinator has, at this point, worked with at least 26 different, made at least 26 different community connections. He's connected teachers and students to Broadway Programming. We had four students participate in the Central Ohio Leadership Academy. We've taken a group of students to the Creative Mornings Columbus. Our students were the only students there, this is an adult group, basically a group of thought partners who get together monthly, and so we have students who attended that. We've taken a group of students to the TEDx Columbus Planning, so they can learn what that is about, because we're interested in doing a TEDx Bexley in the future. And then also, we've offered opportunities to OSU for women in science and women in math. Jill and I have also worked with a number of groups tomorrow, or Wednesday evening, we're actually leading a book discussion of What Made Maddie Run at the Gramercy, who was one of our partners with Bexley Be Well. Obviously, we mentioned Bexley Be Well earlier, we had nine different community partners who worked with us on that particular initiative, and then again, we had a meeting recently with Nationwide Children's Hospital regarding some mental health partnership planning, and that is coming to fruition, and I'll be very excited to explain more of that to you. And honestly, that happened as a result of Bexley Be Well. A number of community members have reached out to me to be part of that work, and so we continue to leverage those relationships that will bring our programming to our students.
And our fourth goal would be develop, form a team, and a part of that is building commitment to the Bexley School's vision, mission, our core values with our community, staff, and students. Dr. Miller and Mr. Smith have done a wonderful job keeping our community and our staff updated about the upcoming levy on the November 5th ballot. As you can see, they've done 42 levy events thus far, and they still have some more to go. We've also expanded communications through our social media, our website, and our e-newsletter. So far, I've produced actually 21 new videos this year, and you'll see one here in a little bit, and you can see that we've also grown our Facebook and Instagram followings a little bit here, and we consistently have higher interactions and reach with those social media posts compared to analytics that I've looked at compared to last year. And you'll continue, I expect, to see these following and interaction stats to continue to ride, that kind of just takes consistency and variety, which I feel we're doing a pretty good job of so far. And also, the seven core values, which drive a lot of the work that we do every day here at Bexley City Schools, was presented by our school climate committee at each school this year.
And then our last school area was to engage equipment and power staff and parents through differentiated learning, and we've talked about the September 22nd Parent Institute, but it was pretty wonderful so early in the school year, that 54 people come out on a Sunday and to take advantage of 22 unique sessions of learning. The differentiated experience is really important. We do take to heart the feedback that we get from our community as we plan future events, and we did get several recommendations, and again, several of those around mental health and wellness that we'll be looking to plan for as we move forward into the year. And then Bexley Learning Institute, that's our November day that's coming up, and there have been over 70 sessions that have been put together for our staff, and again, based on what they are interested in having support for their classroom instruction, as well as just mental wellness, and even just general life balance for our staff as well. So we're looking forward to that, but we also have two mandatory safety sessions, which we're pleased that we have this time to bring to our staff on that day. So it's been a great start to providing some very specific learning for our community.
So not last, but next to last, just a reminder, just to let you know, how do we do this work? In addition to identifying the goals, we as an executive leadership team take time at our weekly meetings to talk about what are the priorities for the next 30 days, the next 60 days, and the next 90 days. So this is always on our radar, this is always in front of us, we are always planning for what comes next, and so as we look out to the next quarter, we're always looking at that 30, 60, and 90 days. Sometimes we don't know the 60 and 90 days until we get some data, and you can see we do a lot of data gathering. We don't want to implement strategies without knowing that there's a real need for those. We want to implement work that's appropriate and that's tied to the data that we're gathering. We want to be thoughtful in our work, and also, we want to make sure that what we do is going to make a difference for students. At the end of the day, it's to make a positive impact on students. I think you can see, and this literally is the tip of the iceberg, there is a great deal of work taking place in our district every single day by dedicated professionals who care deeply about children. And so lastly, and this is video 21, and I don't know if you've ever been around school chicks, to produce 21 videos in the first couple of months on the job is excessive, and so I want to thank Tyler for his work in this area, he has a real talent here. But what we wanted to do was show you a brief video, just to give you a sense of what does this look like in action in our school, so you can take a look. I'm with faculty, the opportunity to engage intentional reflection around the practices and engagement of students, and looking at who more students need or learning is most relevant for them in their lives.
[inaudible] So at this point, we are at the Freedom Mornings Columbus, Freedom Mornings today is an international networking event, which is a chance for them to learn the professionals who are available, how to go up to the stage and talk to them, and learn.
So again, just the merit to the iceberg, what questions do you have for any of us? Good evening. Great job. Obviously, we're always available for questions, and we'll have our next update in either December or January, looking at the agenda.
That was my question, I was asking.
Yeah, well, we'll do this each quarter, and then in June, we'll have a summit of what we accomplish.
I think it's important, I mean, just from my perspective, and this is more of a comment than a question, I've invited people on social media and other people to be here tonight or to watch this and to get this information as to what we're doing as a district, especially when we're talking about, we're asking the community for, for a levy. I think it's important for our community to see this and hear this and understand that what we're doing as a district and what your leadership team is doing, and I for one commend all of this, that you've, just in the short time and the stuff that's been put together, and I wish our community could see, would come here and see these things and be able to see what we're doing as a district, so I wanted to make sure I commend all of you on that.
Thank you. It really is coordinated efforts to engage equipment and power each student. It can feel like a number of different things going on at the same time, but we work really hard to make sure that it's coordinated, and that it does, it gets us to that, that Bexley learner profile, which is a graduate who's engaged, equipped, and empowered, ready to take the next step to find success and to be well through that process. Thank you for your support.
Can I, like, just add one comment really quick? I think, I guess what I want to say is, first of all, thank you, but I think the fact that none of us have any questions is actually like a testament to like how awesome the communication is, like, do you know what I mean? I think we've heard, this is an awesome summary of like all that's been going on in a nice one big package, but I think it's all things that we've been hearing little bits and pieces of all along, and so as John said, it's a nice, like, for the community to be able to hear it too, but I think that's part of the reason why we're all just kind of like, yeah, it's the stuff that we've heard. So thank you for the, for this, but for the, like, continued communication.
Thank you.
I think it's awesome.
The redundancy in leadership and the messaging is what we appreciate. It's over the same, we hear the same thing, but then we hear the accomplishment, the goal, so there's a amount, there's a certain amount of, you're assessing what you're doing, we've given you the responsibility, you're assessing, you're holding yourselves accountable for what we're doing, and to me, that's what the public can appreciate, is that it's not just a lot of words and a lot of, you know, a diagram and pages and everything, that when we get a report, it's the actual work being done, and that's what we want, you know, so we appreciate that. And the amount of leadership that we now have, you know, responsibility spread out horizontally, like when you did the reorganization of the structure of the school district, that spreads out the leadership, the responsibility, and the accountability, and that's, makes everyone more successful, I think, and they can do their job better, so thank you for that.
Thank you, and thank you for your support and your leadership support to keep this work driving forward. It really does make a difference. It really does make a difference. Thank you.
I'll continue on with my report.
Yes, thank you.
So a couple of items on the agenda that I wanted to draw your attention to. Under Certified Staff Changes, you'll see that Susan Morantz is retiring as our Gifted Intervention Specialist from Maryland Elementary School at the end of the year. Susan has taught for 44 years. She began her career at Columbus School for Girls, and then she went to Columbus City. She joined the staff at Maryland 16 years ago, once her own children had left Maryland. Her three children all went through Bexley Schools, as many of you know. She has been a pioneer in gifted education, and scores of Bexley students have benefited from her passion and commitment, creativity, and advocacy. She is retiring in order to spend time with her first grandchild, who will be making his or her debut very soon. We don't know when. So Susan will most definitely be missed, but we wish her the very best and great joy in her next phase of life. Classified Staff Changes, you see two nurse recommendations that were made to fill a couple of vacancies that we recently had. Lee Fay is being recommended for the four-hour position at the Cassingham Complex. And Raquel Boyer, excuse me, is being recommended for the full-time position at the Cassingham Complex. You also see, and I mentioned this in my email on Friday, a job description for a high school building instructional team member. This is work to maintain the work of former teacher leaders. If you recall, we repurposed all of our teacher leader funds to support our instructional coaches. Ms. Robbins at the high school, however, asked if she could continue to have those teachers do the work that they were doing. And thanks to Mr. Smith, we were able to approve that. She is utilizing her high school building budget, so there is no additional cost to the district for her to maintain these. She's just choosing to allocate some of her funds to support this particular position. The reason you're seeing a job description is because we eliminated the teacher leader position, so we needed a different title for them, so as not to create any confusion. So that's what that is. You also see an updated calendar. I've sent you a number of revisions of the calendar for the 2021 school year. Also have worked very closely with our Bexley Education Association. What you're seeing is a later start from what was supposed to be an August 11th start for students, pushing that back to an August 20th start for students. That allows us to have three days of time to work with our teachers prior, and our staff prior to students coming in. The world has changed, and the world of education has changed drastically. We need time to work on our, now that we have common instructional goals, that work needs to be done. Safety and security training really needs to take place before our students arrive so that our staff are fully prepared in the event of a safety situation. We also need to have time to make sure that our intervention specialists, our counselors can work with our teachers to make sure everyone is fully informed of individualized education plans, RTI plans, 504 plans, health plans. There are a number of specific plans that students have in place, and we need to make sure that our students are fully aware and have opportunity to work together. And so to think that one day is enough to get this done, it just doesn't work in the 21st century. And so we need those additional days to do that. This does push the end of the year back to June 3rd. Previously, we're going to have the last day on May 27th, but we typically, over the last few years, have been getting, the last day of school has come in that first week of June. So that's really not much of a change. We also heard from parents who felt that this year we had an awfully early start. I know Mr. Pettit and the tech team, Mr. Eichenberry and our maintenance and custodial staff were all feeling the start this year. We only had seven business days prior to students and teachers coming. If we did not change this calendar, we would only have five business days in August prior to the start of school. So it's just a stressor that doesn't make the start of school the type of start that we want for our students. This is a more student-centered start to the school year. And so we're asking for you to approve a different calendar for next year. And you see that. And then Policy Committee will probably speak, but we do have a couple of policies. One is for second reading. And then you see a couple for first reading and temporary approval. Those are legal changes, graduation requirements, which are all in Ohio Revised Code, so those are not really up for debate. And then you'll see a number of items on there for first reading. Thank you to all the board members who provided feedback to us. And what you see reflect the Policy Committee's recommendations for moving forward. We do have a second reading on those to allow any community members to respond if they would like to. But I'll leave the details to the Policy Committee. And that is it.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you. For the monthly financials, I don't think I'll really highlight anything unless you have questions. Nothing significant jumping out. There's, we did receive our property tax rule back in September. That was a variance we had from last month, and we did get paid from the state for that. The other piece I want to highlight is the amended appropriations. We just passed these in September, but I didn't have all the information from the state. And Jill talked about new money from the state for student wellness in the state budget. We're scheduled to get about $83,000. It's a brand-new fund, so in order for us to start spending the money, you have to approve the fund at the fund level. So that's Fund 467. At the same time, we got some finalized numbers on grants again, so I don't believe I'll need to come back for revised appropriations unless something else would change drastically. The general fund appropriation stayed the same, but it's primarily, the reason you're seeing this is because of that new fund. We don't have a plan set up just yet. We're still, we were just talking this morning about how will we use these dollars? You'll, you see some districts spending money that they've already been spending on these new dollars. That's not our plan. We plan to expand services. Again, $83,000 doesn't go a long way. You compare us to other districts, the larger ones in the area, but I think it's a good thing that we're expanding services. That's the intent, we believe, behind the governor's actions and the legislative actions. And then finally, we do have Vision and Dental Rates to approve, both two-year amounts. Vision is employee-paid, 100% employee-paid, so the district does not contribute anything towards the Vision Plan. The Dental Plan is 100% district-paid if it's a full-time program. So we got a two-year rate for Dental. I believe it's a good rate, seeing our claims history the last several years. To have a 4.5% lock for two years is not bad. And that's it, unless there's questions.
Thank you. Thank you. I don't believe there are any other executive reports, not that we need any, but. For my report, we had an athletic board meeting, I think it was last week. We talked about a couple of things. Dr. Williams kind of touched on it in the presentation. We actually, we have an overall enrollment, and our district is higher, but our 7th through 12th is a little bit lower than it was last year. But we actually have 24 more athletes that are participating in sports over last year, even though we have less. And, you know, one of the things that we talked about when we talked about pay-to-play that we increased, we were concerned about that. And I would at least mention that we have more participation with less students, 7th through 12th, so that's a good sign. We've had waiver and reduced fees as well. So we've been able to work with families that had issues, and Dr. Williams has done a good job with that. We also talked about coaches' handbooks. We have a coach's handbook that's being worked on by Dr. Williams and some of the coaches providing input. One of the things we talked about is like, what are expectations for senior night was one of the examples we talked about. So these are all things that we're helping kind of coordinate so everybody's on the same page, kind of with the whole theme of making sure we're consistent throughout the district on how our coaches are. That's part of what the handbook does. And then we talked about sponsorship packages for our athletic programs, that we do have a lot of good corporate sponsors here in Bexley. We want to make sure that we're using those to the best of our abilities. And we've talked about that in the Athletic Board, and Dr. Williams and Mr. Goldberg are working on doing that and having people throughout the community help participate in that. Financial, the Finance Advisory Council, I had to leave early, so I'll leave that to Ms. Laquas. That's all I have. Ms. Snowden?
So I wanted to say thank you to the administration for putting on such a fantastic Bexley Be Well program. And also, the Parent Institute was really fantastic. I thoroughly enjoyed the sessions that I went to, and they were very informative. So I appreciate the efforts that was made on that. As far as the Policy Committee goes, I would just say thank you to those of you who gave us feedback and everybody for reading on. We did take it all under advisement, and I think, feel, I feel that we have set forth the best policies. I know there were a lot, some mainly legal changes, so, but we did review them all. I also had the opportunity today with Dr. Miller and Dr. Williams and A.D. Goldberg and Mr. Eichenberry to meet with the City of Bexley and Z. Charles. I think there's been some conversation in the community about the possibility of athletic fields or some sort of way to have a little bit more practice space in either Wolf Park or Clausen. And we are a long way away from anything, but we just wanted to have open communications, make sure we're all on the same page, which we very much are. So I appreciate the open communication with everyone, and we're just going to kind of keep at it and see if we can go anywhere positive. But any discussions would need to be made with the City of Columbus as well. So we just wanted to make sure that we were all communicating with each other before we communicate with the city.
Who's representing the City of Columbus in this conversation?
The mayor and the vice director.
And the vice director. Good to have you.
I just have to say thank you to Ms. Morantz for her amazing gift of teaching over the last so many years. She will be sorely missed in our district. I wanted to say thank you to Dr. Miller and the Calendar Committee and ask if we can find some way, Tyler, or someone, to make sure we can really push that out, because I know some people count on, you know, vacation planning and family planning the whole year in advance. So I want to make sure that we're very advanced and overt in our efforts to communicate the calendar changes, which I think are fantastic. So I think we'll have some happy people with that. And that is it for me.
Thank you.
Ms. Laqua?
Yes, I'll report on the Financial Advisory Council we had back October 3rd, which seems like a long time ago. But anyway, there was extensive levy discussion, bringing the council, which is composed of community members that have attended, made pretty good attendance. And the committee brought the council up to speed on what they're, still had left planned to do. And also, Mr. Smith also talked about filing a five-year forecast in November. The state has extended that deadline. It used to be October. We were always pushing to file it now. And so now it's going to be in November, which is really an advantage for us as we get all of this additional data that he can implement into the plan and make it far more accurate and close to what the actual might be. So the council was informed on that, and we're very happy to hear that as well, that the forecast would be as accurate as possible. So, and then in addition to that, the levy, some of the members of the levy committee are here. And I act as a liaison from the Board of Education to that committee, and I, to keep the board updated on what their outreach is in the community. And they've done extensive door-to-door work in the last few weekends, going door-to-door with their door hangers. And they have a very precise plan. They've had it all, it's all been scheduled, and it's very, very well done. And they use faculty and students and community members to help with that. I've even been out, I think Marley's done some as well. And if any of the board members would like to spend their personal time doing so, there is a sign of genius to participate. They've also done extensive videos of members in the community that have been posted to their Facebook and their websites. All different groups in the community have been represented in these videos. They've all been positive, of course. And then also, they have a large ad in the Bexley Living magazine that just came out, and they've done two mailings to the residents. I don't know if the other one, the second one's not yet, but it's about to go out. And their main, my message to the committee, everyone is, please vote. And so that's our message. Theirs is a little different, but the board, my message to everyone is to please vote. So they've done great work. We're closing in on the last couple of weeks. I know it'll be push, 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 but the main message is please vote.
Ms. Minio?
Okay, I don't have anything additional to add, really. Ms. Snowden kind of covered the Policy Committee, which was the only committee I went to this past month. I did want to say the Parent Institute, I thought was awesome. Mr. Pettit, I was at both, I think, two of your sessions, and I feel much more confident using Google Docs, thank you. Bexley Be Well, I thought was really well done. And I have to give a shout out, I went to both the elementary and the middle school plays, and they did a great job. So yay! That's it.
Well, I wanted to thank also Ms. Minio and Ms. Snowden on the Policy Committee, especially this month with this many policies and some things that are, could be some subjects that are a little bit difficult to deal with. But they're all on board docs for anyone that's listening or watching or whatever else people do to follow the board with our huge following. But those policies are in there. There's some for first reading that we put out there for people to review. There are a number of policies on 8C that are up for first reading, that we do a first reading, and they'll be back next month for second reading and approval. So I think it's important for the public to know that these things, we do take input, we do like to hear things. There are some that are just law changes, some other things that, in the policies that, again, Ms. Snowden and Ms. Minio work hard on and take personal time to meet with Dr. Miller and make sure that we're doing the right thing with these policies. I just wanted to make sure I say that. Thank you. Ms. Hauser?
I have a few things I want to say. First, I want to thank Dr. Miller and Mr. Smith for coming to a Student Council meeting, I think, a couple Fridays ago. They talked about the levy to the students, and I think it was a very important thing for them to hear, they can bring it home to their parents. And also, a lot of kids have a misunderstanding of it in the high school, I think. So it was really nice to have clarification and direct contact with students. I want to thank you for that. It meant a lot to me. Mr. Featherstone? And then also, just a homecoming update. We have a venue, we have everything figured out. This year, we're actually doing a homecoming monarch, so one person is winning. We want to make sure that gender is not an issue throughout the school. This was a decision made by Mr. Featherstone, myself, and the rest of the exec board. We don't want anyone to feel like they can't be nominated because of their gender, because of how they identify. We want to make sure that we make it available for all students. So we decided to go with one winner this year, so we're in top 20. We're going to go to top 10 next Tuesday, and then there'll be one winner that will be announced next Friday. So we think this is a step in the right direction with making sure everyone is welcome and happy. And no one says they're speaking in a queen, so we're really happy with this decision. Also, just following up on the Angst film, because I don't think I've been here since they played that in high school. I loved it. I thought it was a great movie. I talked to many people, and they also loved it. The only thing that, especially in high school, because it hits us a little harder since we're in the thick of the social media anxiety, the pressure to do well, the college, all that, would be nice to have some sort of follow-up. I've heard a lot of students, they get all this information about Angst, and they get all this, they watch the movie, and then they have no, they don't know what to do with that, and they don't know where to have an outlet to. So I think having something for the students, maybe to even just follow up with Angst or follow up with Anxiety, I don't think many people know that their counselors are there for that. I think some kids are a little scared. So I think it's important to make sure that all kids have, feel like they have the outlet to go to. And then also, last time, I mentioned the policy meetings that I was doing every month with the school. And last month, we did the cell phone one, and we had a great turnout. We were supposed to do it in here, but it got too big, so we went to the auditorium. So there were a lot of people there. Myself and Mr. Featherstone kind of led the conversation with Ms. Robbins and Mr. McMillan there. I thought it was productive. I got a lot of backlash from students saying that Ms. Robbins wasn't, you know, like answering their questions, but I thought she did a great job. They were extremely respectful of what the students had to say. And so, there's, it's still a grudge, but I'm trying to vocalize to people that it's for the best and that is helping us, even though they may not see it. So, that's all. Does anyone have any questions?
Where did, where's homecoming?
It's at Valleydale Ballroom on Sunbury.
Okay.
It's really close. It's, it's so, Valleydale Ballroom.
November 2nd. November 2nd.
Yeah, November 2nd. And I, we, I planned it last year. I had it there and it's, it's a really cool space and they have a bunch of bikes and stuff, so I'm really excited. Last homecoming.
Thank you. We now move to item 5 on the agenda and that's public comment. Mr. Smith is, anyone signed up for public comment?
A. Worthing. Yes, we've got three.
Okay. Who's the first on the list?
Janet Abrams.
Hi.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have, I have something that, you have to come up here and I have something to read before you start. Although under state law, the Board of Education is not required to offer public comment during regular board meetings, we welcome the opportunity to hear from our community members. As such, we urge your participation within certain parameters. Prior to the start of the meeting, we ask that you sign in on the public comment sheet at the podium. When you come to the microphone, state your name and address. Please limit your comment to five minutes per board policy. And finally, we note that public comment is just that, the public's opportunity to be heard. It's not a Q and A session with the board and we look forward to hearing your comments, but per our board policy, we will not respond to public comment in the meeting or as individual board members. You can be assured that we are actively listening and taking notes for future reference and review. With that, Ms. Abrams.
Thank you. I'm Janet Abrams. I live at 27, excuse me, 2741 Peter Avenue in Bexley. I've had three children graduate from Bexley High School. I have several grandchildren at the present time in Bexley. I was glad to hear the Executive Committee talk about wellness because that's one of my issues today. I have two issues that I want to speak about and the first one relates to the responsible and appropriate way for the faculty to enter a classroom when a class is going on. Back in October during, I don't know if it was fifth period or what period it was, but there was a wellness class taking place. They were watching a movie, the room was dark and all of a sudden, the vice principal comes charging in the room screaming and yelling at a student, wanting him to leave the room and to come to the office with him, which I thought was inappropriate way to handle a situation. It startled everybody. They were shocked, they were scared, they didn't know what was happening and I think the teacher felt the same way because she locked the door afterwards. The students are still trying to overcome this. They felt that, you know, because they were so scared and rocked at the time, they thought it was somewhat of a hostile environment and they are concerned. So, I would like somebody in the future to, when you have a day with teachers or whatever, come with an appropriate way for an adult to enter a room where they're not scaring the kids and upsetting them. Because, I mean, they didn't know, you know, does somebody come in with a gun? What's happening? Because thank God, we don't have that here. Okay. My other situation is, you're talking about, something about the Executive Committee was talking about people watching teachers or going into classes and making sure things are being done. This is about an AP Spanish class that has a new teacher this year. Several teachers, students, what I have heard, are dropping out of the class and many are struggling with grades. I wanted to know if the administration investigates when a situation like this takes place or even if they are made aware of it and if they follow a new teacher and how she's teaching. And are they evaluated during the year and does the administration stop in to observe them from time to time? And when negative patterns start to happen, how do you bring them to the administration if they are seeing it? So, is a child allowed to drop a class unilaterally without their parents' consent or can they just go and do it themselves? I want our school rating to stay at an A and I understand it's fallen to a B and as a Bexley resident, I'm concerned about this and I want it to be the best, which it has always been. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith? Dustin Wetherby.
My name is Dustin Wetherby, 1350 West Sixth Avenue, Columbus, Ohio, 43212. So, I'm, I'm here as the owner of Sculpt Decor LLC, which is a sculpture business where I specialize, where I specialize in creating public custom sculptures, live art demonstrations and also animatronic or robotic displays. Over the past few years, well, I've been doing this for about 20 years. I went to college as a sculpture student and for the past few years, I've been reaching out to schools, several in the area, several Hilliard Schools, Upper Arlington Jones Middle School, as well as New Albany High School. And I've been performing these live art demonstrations for the students. These live art demonstrations often consist of me carving wood or ice as a, as a wave more, more pumpkins, with that's obviously seasonal. I just carved some in Flutters Mall last weekend, that was a zoo. And I'm doing some more this weekend for, working some parts and rep. But I basically wanted to come out here because I know that Bexley kind of, they kind of set the curve for all the other school districts. And I wanted to offer my services as partnering with the school district and potentially create, see if there may be some interest in having some of these live art demonstrations for the students. I think that live art demonstrations, they, they help foster critical thinking and problem-solving skills because I, I take questions and answers during the, during the production. I, I show them what tools I'm using, describe the processes and I think that it really helps students as opposed to just having a, having like a straightforward, just in-class read and, you know, take a test sort of thing. So, I just basically wanted to reach out and, and offer my services as partnering potentially with the art departments in Bexley or, or what have you. And if you're interested in contacting me, my, my email is sculptdecor@gmail, which is S-C-U-L-P-T-D-E-C-O-R at gmail. My website is sculptdecor.com and I also have a ton of videos and things like that on YouTube where I'll do these live art demonstrations and then I offer to provide like a time-lapse video to present that back to the school afterwards so they have something to share with the students and they don't have to sit there for the whole four hours. But yeah, so that's about it for me.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Ted Cahill.
Couple of cold, so I'm trying to speak up. My name is Ted Cahill and I live at 182 South Dawson. Although I'm a volunteer with the Committee for Bexley Excellence, which has been, it was a levy campaign, I'm here tonight as a parent, one, three children. Got one in Cassingham, one in middle school and one in high school. Very excited about homecomings, so keep up the work. Issue six appears as an operating levy for Bexley Schools, but it's actually something entirely different. It's an investment in the heart of our community. Many families are initially drawn here to Bexley because of our schools. The school activities continue to connect our entire community. Matt Quinler remarked at the last candidate debate that we didn't move here for wet basements and small closets and we came for the schools instead. Our schools have gone nine years without new operating funds and even though the 2010 operating levy was only supposed to last three years, and as many of you here are aware, since 2010, our enrollment's gone 19%. During that nine-year period, other voters in Franklin County have approved 19 operating dollars. Issue six authorizes operating funds and those funds overwhelmingly pay for salaries, funding the teachers, counselors and other school employees who nurture our kids. A yes vote on issue six also prefer, preserves key benefits of Bexley education, including our student-teacher ratios, opportunities in the arts, sports, clubs, AP classes and foreign languages. As a parent volunteer, I've knocked on literally hundreds of doors and spoken with our residents, both new and old, and I'm happy to report to you that support for our teachers and schools is overwhelmingly positive. This is due in no small part to the extensive efforts of the administration that they've taken to educate newer families, but also to remind longtime residents of the challenges of Ohio's school funding. Now is the time to invest in our schools. Voting yes on issue six maintains the excellence that brought us here. Voting yes on issue six also allows our teachers and administrators to respond to the changes that the future will undoubtedly bring. And as a parent, I urge everyone in Bexley to vote yes on issue six. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that hadn't signed on to the list that has, is here for public comment? All right. Thank you. Do you guys, do you guys need something signed?
Yeah.
Are you supposed to stay for the whole thing? I'm kidding. If, if you guys need to have something signed, Ms. Abraham can sign outside and, go ahead. We are now to Agenda Item Six, which is our Personnel Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion to approve Item 6A through E on the agenda?
Come on.
Any discussion, questions, issues that, for 6A through E? Hearing none. Since this is Personnel, Mr. Smith, can you call the roll?
Ms. LaCua.
Yes.
Ms. Snowden.
Yeah.
Ms. Minio.
Yes.
Mr. Berger.
Yes. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Seven, Agenda Item Seven, we have 7A through K. Do I have a motion to approve Item 7A through K?
Come on. No, second.
Any discussion, questions, anything in regard to 7A through K? I did want, two things on the calendar. I know that Dr. Miller and the, their Calendar Committee, I'm not sure, but they took feedback and, and I know that a lot of things were taken into consideration and there's a lot of things and Dr. Miller already addressed this and Ms. Snowden. But I appreciate the work that was done on that because I know that there was a lot of community feedback about the calendar, so I know that's sometimes a tightrope, but I appreciate that. The second question that I had was on the, the purchasing of the replacement floor of Cassingham. That's, that's something that's already built into the budget, is that correct?
That's correct.
This is something that is, is going forward regardless, because if somebody looks at this and says, well, what about the levies? This is something that's already built into our budget.
Correct. Built into the budget in last March. Could not be executed this past summer because of a group that had booked the facility, CISP. So, it is a, this summer activity, yes, it's in the 1920 budget.
Right, and so this is something that's, right, updating, okay. I just want, that's all the questions I have.
I just have one question about the calendar. It's just for my edification. Some of the quarters have different dates, number of days in them. Is that a problem or is it just, just get them in by the end of the school year? Does, is that all that really matters?
We do look at how many days are in each quarter. So, we have 30, I believe it's 39 days in both first and second. I have to open this up. We have, and it tells on the calendar, we have 45 student days in winter. That, or third quarter, that is the quarter that we would be most likely to miss any days due to inclement weather and so having a few extra days in that quarter is beneficial. And then you see 52 student days, but we have state testing and AP testing that take place in fourth quarter and so we do lose some instructional days as a result of required testing.
Makes perfect sense, just.
Yep. Good question.
Dr. Miller, just to refresh my recollection on this, if anyone talked about it before, I know that the staff days don't change, they're 186 on the previous calendar and 186 on this calendar. Are the student days?
There is one fewer student days in the 2021 calendar as a result of this calendar. And after much conversation, we believe that having that additional day to prepare for students will make the student days more meaningful and impactful so that everyone's fully prepared for the students that are coming to their classrooms. And again, as our needs of our students continue to change and grow, that time to prepare teachers in advance is, I believe, well worth the time. So, it is one fewer day. We are now on school hours as opposed to days. You know, with the state, we are well over our school, required school hours. And one benefit we have with full-day kindergarten, unlike some districts who have half-day kindergarten who can get into our issues with days, we don't have that because we have full day. So, I feel really confident about this recommendation.
I have one other question about the calendar I failed to ask. I noticed on spring break, the added day is on the Friday before spring break and last, this past year, it was the Monday after. Was there, I mean, it doesn't matter to me, but was there some reason why that was changed?
That's a half, you'll notice at the end of first, second and third quarter, we have a half professional development day and a half work day, sorry, for the teachers. And you'll notice in January, the half PD work day is the day we return, which is the fourth, and it is the day before we go. To come back off of a break and have to deliver PD is a little bit of a demand on, it's not a little bit, it's a huge demand on the time of our administrators who are the ones who put that professional development together. We talked about this with the Bexley Education Association. They wanted them both to be on the returning date and I said, why don't we, well, we split it. We split it. If you see Friday, January 1st is a holiday for administrators, yet they have to deliver professional development the day they return. And so, again, that's a little bit of a demand, but we decided to split it this year. One of the things we talked about is then having a conversation around how we think this works and to maybe get it set moving forward for what works actually the very best for everyone. So, for this particular year, this year, 1920, they both are the first day we return. That works nicely for parents and for students and for teachers. It, it, it doesn't work as nicely for the administrators, but we wanted, so we just split it. No?
Good question.
Well, I think all of that discussion, this is chose and again, for public consumption or whatever, this isn't just some random, we're just throwing dates on the calendar. It's a lot of work going into thought and process put behind it and a lot of people have different stings in it, so I think that discussion that we've all had on it, it kind of brings that to light, so. Any other comments for 7A through K? All right. All those in favor of approving 7A through K, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. All right, moving on to resolutions. We have Items 8A through C. Do I have a motion to approve 8A through C?
Come on. Second.
Any discussion or questions or anything in regard to A through C? Since half of you are on the Policy Committee.
You know, thanks again, there's a lot of policy. And it's not the most fun thing to read either, so thank you for your work.
I did, I did have one quick question. Again, I, I echo what I said before, this is a lot of work and it's a lot of, it's a lot of words and a lot of information. I know that we get recommendations from the School Board, Ohio School Board Association that, in, in regard to the language in JFCG and AGC, the tobacco use, that's upper first reading, that language, that, is that recommended language? Is that from the OSBA?
It is. They're trying to cover the vaping issues that have plagued all of our schools, I think. So, it's just in a, it's a more detailed definition to make sure that we're covering vaping in addition to smoking and any other land you can get chewing and.
Yeah, yeah, I just know that some people have questions about that and, and so when we get these policies, again, this one's for first reading, that, that most of the stuff that we get is recommended language from the OSBA. And we take a look at it and make sure that it is appropriate for our district, so. Okay, that was the one question that I had. Any other questions? So, with that said, all those in favor of Items 8A through C, I'm sorry, Items 8A through C, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Thank you. Item nine, any other matters that may properly come before the board that anyone has?
I have a question about our meetings next year. Are we going to change them to Tuesdays?
Yeah, we, we talked about that and, at our agenda meeting last Wednesday, about having, taking a look at that calendar for next year. I think City Council already has their calendar set. And making sure that we're working around that. I think, I think we all had that discussion before, that we're all, this is, Tuesdays would work better just for everyone involved, for, for board members, coming off a Sunday and even kind of what we're talking about the calendar, coming off that Sunday and having the agenda and the policies and all of this stuff. It gives everyone that Monday also, and then we have Tuesday meetings. It gives us that extra business day to kind of go through things, so. So, to answer your question, yeah, we're probably going, other than our first meeting that's already set, be moving to Tuesdays.
Okay. And so, how do we set that? We approve the calendar in January, right, the first, at our operation meeting in January?
Yes.
Right. We will send proposed, we'll put, now that you've made the decision, we'll put together the proposed dates for the year and send those out in advance. Okay.
And that's, we, we talked about that on last Wednesday at the agenda meeting, but that, I think we, everyone that I've spoken to has been agreeing with Tuesdays. Including possible candidates or possible new board members.
But not on January 6th. The first one's.
That's already set, that's correct. And I think there are certain restrictions you have to have by certain meeting.
You have to have the organizational. I want to say 15th or 12th, what is it? The 12th?
10.
Somewhere in there.
Sometime in January.
Anyway. Yeah, but it is like.
Yeah, but it's, and it is already set, so.
Okay, good. So, we'll stick with the 6th for January and then we'll change it.
We'll get dates out.
We'll get dates out and everybody can have a look at it and then, then, like we've done in the past, even with the Monday meetings, if there's.
You approve on?
Yeah.
While, while we're talking about that, you know, this year, we had like a 7:30 AM meeting just to kind of wrap up the financials. So, it gives me a little more time to.
End of June.
End of June. Are you guys okay with that as well?
Yeah.
Questions?
Yes.
Yes.
Sure. Go right ahead.
See you there.
Not 4th of July morning.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
All right. Our next meeting is November 18th to accommodate the School, the School Board Association meeting. Then one other thing about that, I think.
The OSBA?
The OSBA.
That's the 11 through 13th, right? Right.
So, we are on the third Monday for next month. And I think you'd sent a, in the Friday report about asking, oh, no, that was something different, that was the. With that said, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
All those in favor of adjournment, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Thank you very much.